Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Alabama Community College System to order. I want to thank everyone for their presence. We appreciate the attendance of individuals from all over the state of Alabama. We appreciate the attendance of presidents and staff and faculty from all the different institutions that make up our great system and appreciate all of you being here. We're so thankful to have Dr. Humphrey Lee, President of North West Show's Community College, to give our invitation this morning.
If I could, let me just recite the lyrics of one of my favorite hymns. "Oh God, our help in ages past, our hope for years to come, our shelter from the stormy blast, and our eternal home." Would you pray with me, please? Heavenly Father, I hope we can continue to be help to our communities and provide hope for those in our communities. We just pray that we continue to lead our efforts in our communities to provide help and hope for our students. Pray for our Board of Trustees, pray for those in leadership positions in our state and in our nation, to continue to bless them and grant them wisdom that the work that we do, that we'd be good stewards of the resources that you've blessed us with. We ask you to bless this time that we have before us, grant us safe travels as we return back to our homes. We ask this in Jesus' name, amen.
Mary Scott Hunter, State Board of Education, will lead us in our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Harber, will you count them out?
Here.
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 Next item is the approval of the agenda.
All the trustees received the agenda for the September meeting in advance and had time to look this over. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for the September meeting?
I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
There's a motion by Mr. Davis, is there a second?
No.
Second by Ms. Brown. Any discussion? Any changes or additions to the minutes? I'm sorry, that's the approval. I'm sorry, I'm speaking on the agenda. There being none, all those in favor of approval of the agenda that submitted, please raise your hand. Those opposed. Now, item approval of the minutes of September 14 meeting. Everybody received this in advance, just had time to look these over, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting?
Probably.
There's been a motion of Mr. Van Troy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Floyd. Any discussions or changes in the minutes? There being none, all those in favor approve the minutes of the September meeting, please raise your hand. Those opposed. Item six, public comment. Anyone signed up for public comment? No one signed up for public comment. Item seven, executive legal and public information. Action items, item seven, A1, Trenton State Community College Revised Mission Statement. This was on our work session from the September meeting. We discussed this, reviewed it. Is there a motion to approve this revised mission statement for Trenton State Community College?
Make a motion.
Second by Mr. Davis, a second. And Mr. Caldwell, any discussion? I think all of this is basically to get Trenton in sync with the community college system in a way that the technical college of Michigan and also in compliance with SACS. Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Those opposed. Motion carries. Second is proposed policy 203.01, presidential recruitment and selection for the community college system. We've had discussions on our conference calls, the, this comes, I believe, has gone through the policy committee. Would you like to speak to that? Mr. Van Troy.
Not specifically Mr. Troy, but I would like to thank Mrs. Floyd and Mrs. Brown for their collaboration with me, assistance in reviewing the proposals for this policy. I'd also like to thank the advisory committee that assisted us, provided the necessary information to put the policy together.
Very good. Thanks for the work of the policy committee on this. Is there a motion to approve this proposed policy 203.01?
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Davis, is there a second? Second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
One of the issues that we had when we were being reviewed by SACS was to ensure that we have policy in place for the recruiting and selection of students. And we're sensitive to the fact that the board itself should be a part of the agreed positions. With this policy being enacted, we will validate with SACS. And in addition to that, we will start a process of selecting the schools and determining a product and go through the entire process as prescribed by the policy and accepting applications, reviewing those applications, and making a recommendation to the board if we find a candidate that we think is appropriate for the school. We have a number of schools that I'm concerned about, not about what is happening so much in the school, but the fact that permanent leadership is what we need in our schools. And we have several of our larger schools that we need permanent leadership. Shelton is a good example. I suspect that we'll start there. And what I'd like to do is take one school, go through the process, as we go through, try to make sure that we're doing what is best for the system, and take notes, and then we'll probably come back to the board with a report. And, of course, the board members are going to be involved as well. But I don't think we can just go out and solicit presidents or several schools at the same time. But we'll start with one, but then we have other schools like Jeff State, Southern Union, and other large schools that we need permanent leadership. Not being critical at all of those leaders that are now in the school, but permanent is just the difference if you're permanent. And so, that's kind of what we're planning.
Chancellor Baker, what I especially like is the input that this gets from the entire system. An advisory search committee will be set up to aid the chancellor prior to his making a recommendation to the Board of Trustees. That advisory search committee will be made up of business leaders from staff, leadership from the institution itself, appointing from the different institutions, and also input from trustees. And then, in the final interview, there will be two trustees that the board will select to conduct that along with the chancellor once it gets narrowed down to the final candidates. And then, this recommendation will come to the board. And I think this was well thought out, appreciate all the work that went into this, it was extremely well done and very thoughtful, and we look forward to following this process and getting started on some of these key leadership roles of the different institutions. Any further discussion or comments from the board? There being none, all those in favor of the proposed policy 203.01, residential recruitment and selection, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next item three, this policy 307.02, revision of policy 326.01. These have to do with the renaming and revision of that particular policy and the bond reserve fund policy. Do you have any remarks about this?
Well, yes, as you recall in our discussion, essentially removed the term bond reserve fund, because a reserve fund is not paid out of bond issues. It's paid with a fee based on per hour of the student. So, it really is not bound by the laws that deal with bond issues. So, we didn't want the implication that this was a bond fund. It is a reserve fund. It can be used, and it was initially established to help strengthen the financial bond issue. But, we just simply felt like, because there had been a time when, in review, there were some positions taken that it should be confined to that particular bond issue. So, we just decided to take the term bond out.
Is there a motion to approve this item?
No.
Motion by Mr. McNally, second by Ms. Brown. Any further discussion or remarks about this change in the policy, revision and renaming 307.02 and revision of policy 326.01? There being none, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next, item four, proposed policy 501.01 concerning construction, renovation, and operation. Chancellor Baker, you want to speak?
I think this is, Mr. Smith, he's went through his committee.
Yes, sir. We discussed this, and our recommendation from the committee is to approve this.
What this does is just simply set the limit at which time a school has to come to the Board of Trustees for action on construction and renovations and those types of projects.
That sets it at five hundred thousand, that's what I'm saying. Is there a motion to approve this?
I think a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Davis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Smith. Okay, further discussion? Chuck, do you have any more comments about it? Anything from the committee?
No, I think this is, this is good policy, and I think we can move forward with it more efficiently. Makes a good policy.
There being no further discussion, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Anyone opposed? Let's go to section eight, academic, student affairs, adult education, facilities, physical, information technology, workforce development. Item eight, A1, Devil State Community College recommends to establish an associate applied science degree and certificate in salon and spot management. This was on our work for, on our work session, agenda last night. Is there a motion to approve? Are there any questions? That motion by Mr. Caldwell, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Floyd. Discussion?
President Ferguson, would you like to add anything? I think we covered pretty adequately, President, in our session. I'll answer any questions if you want.
Any questions for President Ferguson? Thank you. There being none, all of, in favor of item eight, A1, for the associate applied science degree and certificate in salon and spot management at Devil State Community College, signify by raising your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next is associate in applied science in occupational therapy assistance from Gadsden State Community College. Is there a motion to approve this?
No.
Motion by Ms. Brown. Second by Mr. Caldwell. Any discussion? Dr. Lavender, any questions for Dr. Lavender on this?
I think it's great that we're adding this, it's nice that it's a fastest growing occupation. And I think that's a great addition.
Yeah, I'm excited about this. Any further discussion or comments from the board? There being none, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next, item eight, A3, allocation of 2016, 2017 industry certification initiative. Chancellor, have any comments on that?
No, and it's here, I think. If you couldn't find me, if you have any questions, I think that you might want to explain how you look at this. It's been a glorious long time.
Good morning. Thank you for your consideration of these industry certification initiative funds. This is a direct appropriation from the Education Trust Fund, a line item, and we receive grant requests from our community colleges. After those grant requests go through the regional councils, in which time they're rated, five, four, three, you've heard about that process, then they come to us with that rating. After that, after we go through those and analyze them, make sure all the information is correct, including bids, not, I'm sorry, not bids, quotes on any equipment that might be purchased, we convened a work session of sector experts in those particular areas, and those experts went through all of these grants, as well as our special populations funds, and reviewed each grant for the need, the industry need in that area, the type of equipment that might be needed or might not be needed. And it was a wonderful day. Actually, it was Mr. Lynn's second day, so he got an opportunity to meet business and industry that came in to volunteer to help us that day. And it was a great opportunity for us and workforce to really understand some things that we might not have understood before. So, based on those, that process, we, this is our recommendation to you, and it's $1,875,000 of grant requests that we will be providing to our community colleges. At which time, after the, they receive our grant awards, the colleges will go through the process and implementation of these grants, and then at the end of the process, our workforce staff always evaluates those grants, make sure the money is spent on what the college requested, there were bids. So, all of that process is evaluated from our staff, and then a, that evaluation is sent to our president, and we talk about it if there are any questions. So, this is our recommendation to you.
I would just like to, in that evaluation, if you could maybe go back to the industry too, who were involved, and maybe a year later, let's just see how they, what their ROI is on this investment. I think it is excellent to target industries and various areas that give them what they need and what they ask for, and just to do a full evaluation, to be hit with the target, to be comfortable with that.
Sure, we'll be glad to. I want you to understand, though, that the industry sector experts that came in were not for a particular grant. So, each of these may not be associated with a particular industry, only the industries in general of the needs in that area. But we'll certainly ask our, we were very surprised that the industry, after we do this, these awards, and you approve of them today, they were very interested in wanting a report back to see what the board approves and to see how we took on their recommendations. Yes, sir?
Am I correct in saying that this was the first time this has been polished through this group?
Yes, sir. It is.
You like the way it worked out?
It worked really well. And Mr. Smith sat on our grant work task force, we met several times with some presidents that sat on the task force, as well as some staff, and Mr. Smith, it was specifically his idea to do this, and it worked really well.
Thank you, but I just want to make sure it worked.
I think the industry, the business and industry were delighted to be come apart. I've received several notes from them, that they were, they now understand it better. Some of them have been involved in their regional councils, and some have not, and they understand the grant process more now, and they really appreciated being included.
I think I speak for all Alabama childbearing women, that if the childbirth simulator makes that process one bit easier than that of the baby.
We want to take a tour of that.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the allocation of the industry certification initiative funds, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Next item is addition, allocation of career coach program. Yes, sir? Thank you for bringing that up. Okay, I thought that we had a motion, a second. We'll go back to item, item three, is there a motion to approve?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Davis, is there a second? Second by Ms. Brown. Any further discussion? Feel free to hit me over the head with something. All those in favor signify by saying, raising your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next item. Thank you, Mr. O'Brien.
Okay, following in, under the same fund that is appropriated by the Education Trust Fund, the legislators, industry certification fund has a line item of $600,000 for career coaches. Those career coaches work through our community colleges and assist our high schools with various types of understanding more about careers, and not necessarily just for our community colleges, but to learn more about careers. So, we take the number of requests that we receive, and basically, we just divide it by the number that we receive into the $600,000. So, this is our recommendation today for the career coach grants, grant awards.
Any questions for Mr. Ferguson?
It's my understanding that the career coaches are assigned to one superintendent, that they be covering four or five schools, and they do a monthly report to their superintendent that they report to. Please, back check me on this, where I would like to see this go, is their activity report for the fund be sent to all of the superintendents, if it's not, and to the colleges that are covering this area with the career coaches?
We will certainly work with the presidents to make sure of that, although I'm certain that the activity report is sent to the president, and then it is also sent to us. So, we verify it through that aspect, but we'll work with the presidents to make sure that they are sent to the superintendents as well.
Chairman, I'm so pleased that we are aggressive on this, because this makes a big difference. And over the years, there's been questions about who should own this program, who should push it, and it sits so beautifully in the system and functions so well in the system. And, you know, as it is successful, there'll be people that try to grab you. I mean, I just feel like we ought to fight for this. And I know for the colleges, they're getting $26,000 apiece, and that means they have to match, and they have to come up with extra in order to really do it, because that doesn't pay my salary. But it makes such a difference for our graduating high school seniors, be able to get this career counseling. And, you know, as opposed to what happens in the high schools, a lot of times, the counselors get tasked to do the school plays and the coaching, and, I mean, they just get tasked a lot to do things. And these coaches stay on top of the trends, they know the students, and it makes a huge difference. I wish we could expand it. I mean, I think we're doing a great job with what we have. I've visited there, I've visited with the coaches, and I've spoken to them, and they're a very motivated group, and they're very knowledgeable. And they're making a big difference. I mean, this is one of those centers of gravity type things. And we build this up, it will make a difference in a lot of things that matter to K-12 and our, and our community colleges and their work. and our community colleges and their work.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Chair, it's beside my... I've been meeting with the superintendent organization, also there. He was superintendent. And to talk about this as we go along later, that our few workforce... He and I have been talking about the fact that we must develop a program that goes down into the lower grades, that uses students to options and opportunities that maybe vary from what they have historically been taught. It just adds to that, it's an enrichment program. I just think it's necessary for them to understand what they need in order to be in the environment that they're going to be in. So, and we intend to work with the superintendents and the State Department of Education to deliver this.
Very important, very important. Is there a motion to approve item eight A four of the Industry Certification Initiative Funds Career Coach Program? Motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Davis. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor, please raise your hand? Opposed? Motion carries. Item eight A five. Existing Industry Training Programs.
This is a wonderful program that our community colleges system has been participating in for the last several years. It is also part of the Industry Certification Initiative Fund, which is a direct appropriation from the Education Trust Fund. And we, as a system, have decided that we would spend up to two hundred fifty thousand dollars for existing business and industry training programs to provide individual grants that do partner with specific industries. There is a cap of fifteen thousand dollars that we match dollar for dollar with the industry. Most of the time, it's for training, and it works very well. And we take these grant applications at the end of each quarter. And what we're asking for you to do here is approve that up to two hundred fifty thousand dollars, and approve for the acting chancellor to participate in that approval each... At the end of each quarter. That allows us to, without coming to the board first, up to two hundred fifty thousand dollars with a fifteen thousand dollar cap per industry. This allows us to get that money straight to the business and industry much faster through our community colleges. Most of the time, they partner with that community college for that training. And it's a very good program, and we received a lot of communication back from the industry that is beneficial to them. Like I said, we approve this, we receive those grant applications at the end of this... Each quarter, and then try to get those grant awards out to our community colleges within the first two or three weeks of that following quarter. And we then will present to you a quarterly report of those approvals.
Any questions for Mr. O'Brien?
And is it per industry and not per request?
It is per request, fifteen thousand dollar cap. It is a sixty thousand dollar cap per industry.
Per industry, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
This is a recurring one, just on a per year basis?
The two hundred fifty thousand dollars actually is just an amount that you appropriate from the total amount of the Industry Certification Initiative Fund. We are just recommending to you that it's two hundred fifty thousand dollars. That is what we have... That's what we've done in the past few years, and it's worked very well. And then, the grant application is set up to be fifteen thousand dollar cap per industry, per request, and that is sixty thousand dollar cap per industry for the... Like, within four years. But you, as a board, can decide to provide more or less money for existing business and industries. Through this program, we are just recommending two hundred fifty thousand dollars at this time.
Point of clarification, these are awarded at the end of each quarter?
Yes, sir.
You suspect that maybe a need to do it every three months, is that possible? Maybe we could explore the possibility of making them, you know, almost instantly if issues arrive, or maybe... It just seems that every three months, maybe a little bit slowly reactive. Just a thought going on.
We certainly have, we certainly receive requests throughout the quarter. And it would be nice if we could award it in that manner. I do not want to speak for the presidents, but I'm sure there are presidents out here who would appreciate receiving that, those awards faster.
Good point.
It'll be flexible and nimble, that would be...
Yeah, I don't see every three months.
Yes, sir.
Do these grants have to go through the Workforce Development Council?
Yes, sir.
That may be a slowness of getting them placed.
Yes, sir.
Get the school and then the sales kids who need...
It seems that they could work in the same way that we are trying to work, in that we approve a block of money and give authority to those making the grants to do it as they're needed and not, you know, let's cut the red tape where we can. Whether it's workforce council or here, someone needs something, we've got the money, why make a wait for maybe three months?
Sure.
Also, of course, that being this... Process.
It's not in the action item that we do it quarterly, that we award the grants quarterly. It's in the grant application. So, if you tell me to do it, we will be glad to do it.
I would encourage you to alter the application to as often as is reasonable for those having to do the work. I don't think so. I think it's... I think we can do that. And if that's the will of this body, I think we can anything that way. And both of that are two things to do, the word nimble. And that's the one thing we get accused of not being, that it's nimble enough. So, I don't see the reason why. And we'll bring back to you the adjustment that we need to make. Be listening to that, if...
Would you like to add anything to make the motion on this? Because a motion hadn't been made.
I would make the motion to approve this that stated with the amendment that we give those administrative grants the opportunity to accelerate the award of them as is reasonable for those doing the process.
That's a motion by Mr. McAnally, on land, and a second by Ms. Brown. I think that's appropriate, and I think that will probably get done with... Any further discussion or comments from the trustees? Got a motion and a second? All those in favor, signify by raising your hand? Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. O'Brien. Item nine Personnel.
We have one person, Mr. Davis Thompson, who's with the state approving agency. He's new. He's now on board with us. And I'm not going to announce another new person that's going to have a press conference after this. We'll make the process of that.
Okay, item ten Chancellor's report. Chancellor Baker, do you have any other remarks?
I do. A, express my appreciation for the kind of support that I've received from the board of trustees. I've taken up maybe more of your time than you made a deal for. But I appreciate you taking the time and sharing with me your thoughts. And I've had a meeting of all the presidents, I think most all of them, and one or two that were not able to make it. But, and we're talking about where we are going and how we're going to get there and the timeframe we're dealing with. We even use things like, let's cut the red tape if we can. And so, we're working on that. But I want to express my appreciation to the presidents. They have been most kind and courageous, cordial, and even willing to make suggestions. And that's important. It's important because what you encounter every day is different than what we encounter here in this building. And it's our job to do everything we can to make your job... I don't mean easy, because there's no way to make it easy, but flow the work flow as well as it can. And we end up staying focused on having the students, helping the students succeed. When I say succeed, we're talking about the academic, the geni, the transfer credits as well as workforce. And I believe my sense of working with the presidents, their commitment to move in unison toward that direction. And I just want to express my appreciation. And the appreciation to the staff here in the office. We're planning some, you know, I guess every time leadership changes, you need to move a few chairs and desks, we have done some of that, and we're working on that. I just, I appreciate all the help that I've received in trying to make this transition as we can make it. And I would like to, I don't want to go into any detail, but I have... Can I call him Roger?
Yes, sir.
He's just had the most recent conversation. Would you mention the chancellor's situation with us? Just so you know, Roger's been taking care of the chancellor personally legally.
Thank you, Chancellor. Well, there's no secret everybody in this room about my friendship to the chancellor. He has been a true friend to me, and I stay in contact with him on a regular basis. I communicated with him last evening. The news was not pleasant. He has now received some confirmation that the sight in his right eye may not be restored. The shingles virus apparently was so severe that the medication and treatment that he was given did not immediately show up as ineffective, but apparently was... Left the shingles virus alive and well for several weeks, where the medication did not address it, which has now resulted in some significant nerve damage in the right side of his head facing his eye. He has met with an eye surgeon yesterday. He has an infectious disease control physician who is dealing with all of this in an integrated fashion, and is continuing to seek and search for even national help to deal with this medical crisis. He did, in fact, authorize me, and Jimmy, I appreciate you considering this, to share with you publicly his situation. He's very disheartened right now. If you have time to drop him a card or a letter. Due to his vision issues, he can't travel. It's very difficult for him to read right now. So, text messages and things like that are very difficult for him. So, he's continuing his treatment, he's hoping to get better. He's still had some fight in him, but I don't mind telling you, I've known him for a while now. Last night was the... He was as down last night as I've experienced him since his home ordeal started in July. So, I know he and Elaine would covet your prayers and well wishes, as you have the opportunity to do that.
I'm sure all of you keep him in prayers. Maybe will you see what the trustees all have his home and his rest?
Roger, thank you for sharing that with us. And we've all been very concerned about the chancellor and his situation, and we continue to keep him in our prayers. Item eleven Date and location Next meeting will reconvene of our work session on the third floor at one thirty. It's thirty minutes later than normal. We do have a press conference prior to that. Our next board trustees meeting will be here on November ninth at ten a.m. Anything else from the trustees? Any comments, remarks from the trustees? First floor break room for the press conference at one p.m. Any other announcements I need to make? Okay, next item twelve Adjournments, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion. Is there a second? All those in favor, say aye. We stand adjourned.